I think I'll call the meeting to order now. Everyone is here except, I thought Joanne would be here. I knew that Christina and Dahlia would not be here and I wasn't sure about Albertine. So, anyway, there are five of us, five commissioners, so that makes a quorum. So, we'll start the meeting now. Thank you all for coming and we're going to, oh, be sure to sign the sign-in sheet if you want to get your name turned in to get paid, since we're going to get paid a little bit this year. And we'll have to do that every month. And right now, we're going, as you probably know, we have three grant applications tonight and we're going to get started from now at 5:30 or so. Here are their presentations. And so, I want to welcome, oh, wait a minute, I had minutes for you. I want to welcome Jerry Jones here tonight to talk about Soul Steppers. Do you all have your grant applications that we've set up? If you don't listen to her now because I have, I have something for you. Yeah. So, do you want to stand up or do you want to come to the table? What do you want to do?
I'll sit at the table since I'm a little bit up there. This camera's up real high.
Oh, yeah, sit here.
Okay. Here's, this is the original.
This person. Oh, did she get one? Okay. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I'm Jerry Jones. I'm with the, on the board of the Michigan City Soul Steppers and I think everyone probably has seen them at some point or another in performing in the city. And we are, of course, a nonprofit organization and we are seeking some support from the community to be able to provide services of our, of the Soul Steppers. And we are a, I'm going to read so I don't blow that as far as what our mission is, is to show others a positive outlook on life by performing various synchronized stepping routines while demonstrating hard work through discipline, respect, commitment, dedication, concentration, motivation without hesitation, and education as a youth organization. And the Soul Steppers is a group of students from the Michigan City area schools who provide synchronized, we call it drill team stepping services. And we have performed probably in every venue from funerals to weddings to parties and then in parades all over Michigan City and not only in the Michigan City but throughout the country. And basically, to just give you in a nutshell, some of the extent of their services is that we were in New York a couple of years ago performing in the Veterans Day Parade. And the, there was a team that was, or a band that was in front of us, a high school band, they were from Spokane, Washington. And the two groups kind of, while waiting in line, started interacting with one another and teaching each other some steps. But, one of the models that the, our director Lynn Isbell always tells the kids, she says, "You always have to be on your best behavior because you never know who's watching." And little did we know, that day, the band director of that team, of that band, saw the kids, but he also saw their beat-up instruments and how, you know, old and taped up and painted the drums and the things were. But he was amazed at how the children performed, as if they had the best equipment there. They did it with pride, they did it with, you know, enthusiasm. And he actually was so moved by it that he, when he went back to Spokane, Washington, he then contacted the Veterans Day Committee in New York to say, "What was the name of that group and those kids?" And he contacted us and he decided that he wanted to do something in Spokane to help raise money to buy us equipment. And so, we really, you know, said, "Yeah, he's saying that, but who can go to their community and ask them to support another community halfway across the country?" But by golly, he did and they came to Michigan, he came to Michigan City on Christmas Eve, flew in and met with them and he wanted to see the kids open all of these drums and the, everything, it was like amazing. They had never touched anything that was new. And we could not believe that he was doing that. And so, that gave the children the incentive to know that, hey, people do care, you do have to provide your services as if it's the best. And so, that's what it is. So, we're always doing it, so we're very thankful that we, they have nice instruments and the containers, the boxes to keep them in. And so, that was good. We're always trying to better ourselves and to do things. And so, right now, we're trying to get the students, the participants, new uniforms, especially for the winter, coats and sweaters and things that they can match up. And so, we, that's what we are asking your support in that, for $500, to help us with the cost of those events, of those items. There be, you have our budget in there and so, the most of our funding comes from the grants that we write, fundraisers, the students and the staff are fundraising all year long. That's one of the biggest things. And this year is our 20th year of operation. Our director Lynn Isbell is a person that is just an incredible individual and she's worked those whole 20 years with no pay from us, you know. She's just that concerned and interested in the students. So, that's what we are hoping to do and ask if you would support us in that endeavor. I'm open to any questions.
I have, I have a comment. I have been around, come in, come out of town often and they have really enjoyed seeing the Soul Steppers during like the parade because it's something very unique that they never get to really see.
And she is a, it's incredible, I said, "How do you come up with those moves, the routines?" And, you know, that's her gift. And so, I can't do that, but my gift to their organization and supporting is that, well, I know how to write and I know how to try to seek money, so that's what I'm doing. So, you know, so that she doesn't have to worry about that. We, the board is there trying to help provide the resources to provide those services.
Yeah, Jerry, you mentioned that, something about her pay. Actually, I did not realize because I know initially when she got started, it was a volunteer position, correct?
Yes, and it still is. You know, what I do is like I need, every time I write a grant, I'll build in something as a stipend and all, but then when we get the funds, I have to base it on what we, you know, the needs. And for us, it's a very expensive organi, operation because to travel, the cost of buses and so, for the buses, for the hotels and the food and uniforms, you know, and they astound groups a lot of times when they come and, and when they're dressed and it's everybody, so, everything is synchronized. So, it's there and so then I'll go, "Okay, we'll have to take that out." In fact, in this budget, I had a stipend and when I updated it, I just kind of took it out. And so, we just press that one day we'll be able to do that. But she is willing to continue providing that support as long as she's able to get support for the program for the kids.
I remember, she's had them better, I mean, practicing, I get, I remember all the places that she had to line up when she first got started, just to find a place to practice.
Right.
So, Jerry, I have seen them perform, I'm kind of curious, age range for the kids? Because I've seen little people and big people, you know.
The average ages, be teenagers, 12 up to 18.
Okay.
But we've had some little ones who've just kind of come in. She has a grandson that was just kind of born into the group and he has been, but he's like one of the main players, you know. He beats the, I can't remember what they call those.
Zylophones.
The quads. And so, he, you know, he's, he does that. And so, if she has children that show the ability to do it, then she lets them in. In fact, they now have a junior group that performs.
And you would spend this on uniforms, winter uniforms?
Right, right, we will use that.
Looks like that's a huge part of your budget.
Yeah.
It's like the highest part of your budget, so you can, you could use that. Okay. Well, does anyone else have any questions for Jerry?
Thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming in.
Could somebody step out? Get Amy, invite Amy to come in now. And Jerry, I'll be explaining what happened with the delight, I'll be explaining that when we are delivering.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah.
It's been about two years. I thought I'd run. I sit.
Okay, I think this is the hot seat.
That's what I assumed. Okay.
Hello, hi. How are you?
Just fine, how are you doing? Good to see you.
Busy, busy, but you know, it's the way life rolls, right?
And you are Amy Hammond?
Yes, I'm Amy Hammond.
Seventh and eighth grade science teacher at Barker and Marder.
Yes, yes ma'am, yes ma'am. Thank you so much for having me.
Glad you could be here.
Yes.
And do you want to review what your request is about?
Absolutely. So, there is a Girls' STEM Conference that is hosted by the Sycamore School in Indianapolis and it is a, and I brought brochures, I brought 12 different brochures if you would like to take one, take a look at that. It is an awesome opportunity. Daisy Lee is an environmental science teacher at Krieger. She took a group of girls last year and I wanted to and then I was kind of, you know, kind of like, oh, last year. So, her and I have talked this year. So, we would like to take a group of girls from Krieger and Barker this year. Sycamore School has been very gracious. They have reserved 20 spots for 20 Krieger young ladies and 20 spots for Barker young ladies. They will sponsor 15 each of our 20 that are, that are coming. I know, it's amazing. So, that's very, yes, yes. So, what we are asking and requesting for with this STEM Girls Careers Conference is that we would like to sponsor the other five from Barker and the other five from Krieger so that this wouldn't be a burden for the young ladies that we're inviting to go. So, the only thing we're asking of them is to be able to go. It is on a Saturday, so the girls that are attending are giving up a Saturday and we have to leave at 3:45 a.m. because they're an hour ahead and it's a three-hour drive.
Round trip that day?
Correct, yes. Yes, we won't get back till 5:30, about 5:30 at night. So, we, I thought I'd reach out just to ask and, you know, you never know until you ask. From what Daisy Lee has shared with me from last year, she said it was the most amazing experience that the girls, you know, got to be involved with last year. So, what she did last year, the Sycamore School sponsored, I believe, 10 to 15, I can't remember the exact amount. And then she just reached out to friends to sponsor, you know, to sponsor a few young ladies here and there that couldn't afford to do, you know, to do the trip. And I feel like, you know, it's a lot to ask a parent to drive their young lady all the way down to Indy, you know, for the day and then they, the parents cannot attend, parents aren't allowed there. There is a parent portion to it, but, you know, it's an all-day thing and I don't feel like, you know, some of our, some of our students that need the encouragement, I feel like, you know, if you're specially invited, you know, some of the girls that I know have signed up with me already to go are really excited. I, I, you know, I sought out girls that I could see a little spark in and they might need just a little oomph and, you know, just might, might have that, need that little extra coaching and just that little, "I believe in you" type, type of thing and, you know. So, some of the girls that have sent to me are so excited. They offer 34 different sessions, so the girls that are going select eight of their choice, so it's geared toward their interest, which is exactly what we want, especially for the adolescent, young person. And then the, the woman that is doing the scheduling will schedule them into five different sessions for the day. And then lunch is involved with that. So, it's, it's pretty amazing. Daisy said it was such an amazing time last year. So, I said, you know, "I can't say no this year, I'm in." So, we've requested our buses already, but, you know, we're hoping just to get those few extra ladies involved if we can get funding for those 10, so it would be $350. And Daisy and I talked this week and we thought, "Well, you know, if I don't fill them all at Barker or she doesn't fill them all at Krieger, we can, you know, just work with trying to fill the 40 between the two middle schools as much as possible." So, I'm looking forward to it because this will be my first year and we're really excited. So, I hope you take it into consideration and, and I know Daisy's passionate about environmental science, I'm very passionate about STEM, if you don't know me. So, we're really excited, so.
Okay. The, at this point, I don't think the funding, the check would not be available if it's awarded in time for March 7th, is that going to be a problem?
Let, Daisy and I came to contact the woman that is heading up the Sycamore School because she's been very gracious about reserving those sites and giving us even 30 free reservations. I would think that would be okay. What I might need to do, maybe she could hold those spots for us and then, you know, be okay with the, with the check, you know, forthcoming or, you know, the payment forthcoming. Yeah, an invoice or something like that, we can work on that. Once we know, you know, if our request is okay or not, we can do that, we can talk to them and, and make sure that that's all right. So, that's not a problem, I don't think. Or if not, I'll write a check and we'll, we'll go from there, I don't know, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Who's doing the training? Is it someone from within?
Yes, it is, it is women within the Sycamore School. The Sycamore School is actually a specialized STEM school. So, they specialize in STEM careers, because I kind of looked them up and was looking into what they do. And this is, they've been putting this on for quite a few years. They also are in partnership with, it's Cortiva Abrir Science. So, it's a company that they have a partnership with that also helps out with, with the full days of, of events. So, and also part of the swap with them sponsoring 30 of our girls from Michigan City is Daisy and I are volunteering for half a day. So, we'll be working with some of the girls or whatever they need us to do, you know, chaperoning, corralling kids, being with, you know, whatever. So, we're, while we're there, we are going to sponsor half of our day's time to the ladies that are there. And I know they have, it's like 400 girls across Indiana that attend this, so it's, I, I'm excited, I'm getting chills already because it's an amazing experience if you look at all of the different STEM career, just options for them that could just lead into something more for them in their future and encourage them with their high school that, you know, and beyond. So, I'm really excited, so.
So, I think, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I think we might have sponsored one of the kids, Nancy and I had sponsored one of the kids for Daisy last year. And the pictures, she provided us pictures and stuff of the, of the day and a report back. And it sounded just like a fabulous day. All the kids that participated were just, just had a spectacular time and were just really energized in spite of the fact that they had got up super, super early. And so, I was thrilled, I was thrilled to see that they had something like this available and glad to see that we have looked at getting our kids involved with it as well, so.
Well, I think Barker's done an incredible job the last few years, getting kids involved. And it all comes from within the school. It does, I know it does. So, I'm really excited about that. Are you getting any transportation?
Yes.
I mean, from the school system?
Yes, transportation will be provided by Michigan City area schools, we're taking a school bus. And then on our way back, we plan to stop and I know Barker is planning on stopping in Lafayette for dinner and having dinner with the girls that attend on the way back. So, that'll be kind of a nice little, you know, bonding time and...
I think I know probably where you're going in Lafayette.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So, I know the girls are just jabbering about it already and they're always talking to me in the hallways and, and other places. And I try, I really tried to seek out girls that probably would not have the opportunity otherwise. Not that I know their, all their situations, but, you know, I'm pretty close with a lot of, at least my girls that I, because I'm back in the classroom now, pretty close with a lot of those girls. So, there's a lot of my girls personally from my team that are going, so I'm really excited, so, and I know they are too.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay. And you'll take lots of pictures.
I definitely will, so, yeah. Because my husband said, he said, "Well, good luck at the meeting," he goes, "You were going to go last year." And I said, "Well, I was a little hesitant because it is a long day and it is on a Saturday." And I was concerned if any girls would even want to, you know, dedicate their Saturday to something like that. And after talking to Daisy, she said, and I said, "Well, did any, like, not show up?" She said, "One didn't, but they went to her house and she ended up going." So, it all worked out, so all 20 of her girls went last year.
When a bus pulls up in front of your house.
So, yeah, so I was a little leery just because it is a Saturday, you know, and it is their whole, it's a whole day, it's a 13-hour day, you know. So, and she said that was no problem, so, so I'm...
It's great again.
Yeah, I know, I know. You know, and in, and as an eighth, seventh or eighth grader, you really don't know what you really want. So, the exposure, I think, is the most important thing. Because you, I didn't know what I wanted to do, you know, I still kind of don't know what to know, I'm just kidding. But, you know, just the exposure and that. And I know at Barker, we're really trying to push the career aspect to all of our students about, okay, you know, these are options available to you, these are things that are available to you, these are scholarships and grants and things that are available to you, don't, don't think it's impossible. If you really want it, we can make it possible.
And what a lot of students don't realize, like in high school, like for some of these, like veterinary medicine, you have to start working on that.
Now.
Now, like as soon as possible. And so, getting those like job experiences or stuff in high school, it sounds like it'll inspire them to...
Right, right. So, this, it sounds amazing, so we're really excited. Thank you for having me and listening to me.
It's a day at Indy for the girls.
Oh, I guess, absolutely, absolutely. They ask, "Can we sleep on the bus?" I'm like, "Oh, absolutely." Mrs. Hammond's going to sleep on the bus. Probably on the way home, not on the way there, so. Any other questions or anything?
Okay. Anybody? No, thanks so much.
Thank you so much for having me, I really appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was great seeing you, Joanne. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more. Let's see. Anita King project? How much was Jerry's request again?
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
It looks like $350 for the STEM girls.
Right, $350. And this next one, how much is it? There are going to be two people here, but maybe we'll just put it, yeah, move a chair over or something, you know, if you don't mind the faith, thank you.
There's an extra packet over here.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay. You want to have a seat here?
Yeah, all we've got is just the making, the scoring sheet. It is just some information. So, it should be...
And now, we have with us Kayla Vaselko, a student at PNW, and Dr. Jerry Holt, professor at PNW. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for having us, thank you. I have some extra copies of some information from our project if you would like to take one and pass them around.
And what an interesting project.
Thank you. So, whenever you're ready for us to start, just let us know.
Start.
So, I can talk a little bit about how I became aware of this really interesting project. I'm a student at...
Can you talk a little bit louder?
Absolutely. I'm a student at Purdue University Northwest, I'm an English writing major and I'm a student leader on campus. And one of the things that I've been able to do throughout my time there is put on a walk that allows the community to honor their heroes and loved ones that they've lost and who are still motivating them in their lives. And at the walk last October, Dr. Holt actually came to speak and he told the story of a local hero and that was Anita King. And so, that's where I first learned about some of the incredible things that she's done. And I was able to understand the fact that there's not a lot of recognition for those incredible things. And so, this research project is to help us learn more about all the things that she did and gain recognition for her. Anita King was a great activist for women. She was the first woman to drive across the country from California to New York completely alone, at a time where women, married women were not even allowed to hold a passport separate from their husbands.
I was curious about that fact, how was that verified?
How was it verified?
That she was the first woman to do this?
The car company.
Oh, was it? Really? Okay. Yeah. She, she, well, yeah, was it, was not her car, is that it?
Yeah, they, they provided the car.
I see.
This was very much a publicity stunt.
I see, okay. I'm sorry, you were probably going to say that, but I had read that part and I didn't realize how it was verified, you know?
Absolutely, she was sponsored by Paramount Pictures and the Kissel Car Company. And she was promised that upon the completion of her drive, she would have a picture made about that journey. And so, in addition to her accomplishments in film and was doing her own stunts and being a race car driver, she was, like I said, a great activist for women. In California, she actually started the YWCA because, like Anita, many women of that time, they came from small towns and they, they came there to make a start in Hollywood, however, they, they spent all of their resources getting there. And at that time, women really weren't represented or treated fairly in the industry. And so, a lot of them being drained of resources... And so a lot of them, being drained of resources, didn't have anywhere to go. And they were kind of abused and mistreated by the directors and some of the male figures there. And so Anita started the YWCA so that women would have a place to stay that was safe and a place to raise money, um, for resources to go home if they wished to.
Okay, so the, so the project is, you're asking funding for the flight and for the lodging?
Right.
From the commission?
Absolutely.
And that would, so that would be considered training? Education and training?
Well, it sounds like the result, talk a little bit about the results. So you're looking to go out there and do some research?
Right.
And so what's, what's gonna come out of that research?
And so we hope to learn more about her history there. We hope to see, to uncover her films and restore them and hopefully recover artifacts from that time and from Anita's journey and bring what we can back here to her hometown so that we can, A, dedicate a plaque and also put some of these artifacts on display and get recognition from where she came from.
Have you talked to any, or do any of the historical museums in this county have any information about her? Do they?
Not that we've found so far. The, the ideal thing in regard to your question would be, she worked for the director Cecil B. DeMille, who was pretty much the king of the screen at that point. And she was in several of his films. But some of them lost and some of the footage is hard to track. But the ideal thing would be to be able to bring back copies of some of this footage, which could then be used in Michigan City's own exhibit here, which for movie people, feminists, race car people, would be quite an attraction. You know, it'd be worth turning off the road to Michigan City when they might not have otherwise.
There have been so many, I think in the past five, 10 years especially, old films that have been recovered, silent films and so on. Is there any, any kind of catalog or record of what's available that has not yet been brought to a stage where it can be viewed by the public?
Well, that's, this is a fact-finding mission. It's to go to places like the Society for Film Preservation and the American Film Institute and just get in there and dig.
That's gonna be fascinating.
I would be able to have an event like that you guys would be able to come to?
Yes, absolutely. And also in our narrative, we mentioned that in addition to recovering these things and raising awareness for all that she did, we would like to try to play about her life and bring that back here as well and put it, and produce it. And so that would not only bring the artifacts, but it would be, it would bring great art to Michigan City as well.
Do you know, I'm interested in these artifacts. Would they make you pay for those or are they hoping somebody will come in and discover them?
Just kind of, would depend on the deal you make. If, on that side of things, and somebody has footage who could be persuaded that this would be a community-driven kind of public service, you might be surprised. Well, you're older better than, than I, that sometimes those things come about in very nice ways. I never, a few years, I don't know, I think a couple of you might remember this. A few years ago, I got to talking to Ronnie Cox, the, the.
The director.
Guy from Deliverance. And he, it turned out to be a very nice fellow who just decided to come and visit my class when I was teaching the film Deliverance. And the next thing you knew, he was performing at the LeBeznik over here and has been a friend of this community ever since. So sometimes these relationships happen without warning and are wonderful surprises.
Thank you. So it says that she worked as a maid for the Barker Mansion. So did they have anything at the Barker Mansion in their archives about her?
That's another, another stop on our journey.
Oh. And I can interject a, I'm Janet, though, and that, I've talked to. Um, there's a new director at the Barker Mansion. And I've worked in their archives before. They're very extensive.
Yes.
You could spend weeks and weeks there. But I was going to talk to you afterwards. The Barker family actually is going to be here in April. So they play a very, they're playing a more active role. And so I will talk to you separately a little bit about, like, maybe connecting somehow or seeing what their interest level is.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
If I could just say, you know, I don't want to overspeak here, but I'm getting ready to retire this year. And what you have here is, this is probably the most dedicated, persevered student I've worked with in about 55 years. And she is completely committed to this project and has already done more work on it than probably anybody has ever done on Anita King. So you have an absolute treasure here. And in terms of the project itself, you have, a door opens every day. You know, it was only with the Skype interview we did with the relative that we found out. And she kind of let it slip. We asked why Anita King's career didn't continue into sound film. And she said, "Well, they always said her voice was too low." And I'd always read it was because she was a heavy smoker. But the aunt, I mean, the niece let it, let it slip. Something very different was going on. Her work to build these women shelters out here and work with the YWCA, that was a preview of the Harvey Weinstein case. Because at those days, the studio heads, you know, all acted like he did. And starlets just kept disappearing out there. I mean, serious stuff was going on. And she started those, those facilities to have some haven for these very persecuted people. And it's looking now like probably at that point, those same studio heads said, "Your career's over." So this is amazingly hot-button, important story going on here. And I just, I commend Kayla to you with, with, you know, every ounce of live ink. So she will bring this through and she's got something amazing going.
So it's kind of me-too, them-too?
Exactly.
What year are you in?
I'm a junior.
Okay.
What is your major?
English writing.
Okay. Okay. Well, this is very, very interesting and very exciting to find a woman. And this year that we're really looking at women's history.
Absolutely.
You know, this is just perfect timing and I wish you all the luck in the world. Hope this, this, you can really bring a lot.
You have to wonder, the car company doesn't have some film as well, so.
Well, that also has to be researched. This is a work in progress.
Yes.
Can I make a comment, Bonnie? Can we maybe invite her to come on March 8th to present our suffrage?
Yeah, I can, actually, I can send you, I have your email address, so I'll send you information about that. But International Women's Day is Sunday, March 8th. And we're going to be giving tributes to women.
Oh, that's so exciting.
At the NAST, so.
I wonder.
Yeah, I'll send you, I'll definitely send you that. Were there any other expenses that, that you were looking at here? I can't find it now.
There was a budget for 300 for, it's kind of a flight, lodging for a thousand. And any funding, you're looking for any, any support that we might be able to provide toward those.
Absolutely.
Okay.
When are you planning on flying out?
Over spring break, so that would be March 14th through the 21st. So during that period, we'll do a lot of flying.
Okay. Well, there's nothing else. Thank you very much for coming in. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and for allowing us to present to you.
Well, it's been a pleasure.
It was.
Very exciting.
Been in a group for a while that's asked such pertinent questions, so we thank you for that.
Yeah, I could go out. Seriously.
Do we get an A for the evening?
A plus.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming. Janet, do you want to sit up here?
Oh, I'm gonna grab her real quickly and I'll be right back.
Okay. Um, okay, well, we are going to consider the requests later in this meeting. But I wrote up this time, as you can see, you probably found in your packet of information, I made, I made a short version of the rubric and put a blurb about the, the, um, the grant request, yeah, on that. And that way, actually, I want to keep these in case there are any complaints later. I want to know who's, you know, the old rubric. Sometimes we forgot to put the name of the applicant and things like that on it, so. And I wondered, Shar, would you be so kind as to tally our?
Sure.
Our votes at the end of it?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Voting on each of them?
I have to.
So that we can decide?
Yeah.
Yeah, at this, or we'll find out at this meeting. Yeah, okay, good. Did I miss any explanation at the beginning? No, no, no. And welcome. Glad you're here.
Yeah, me too.
You've been through an ordeal.
I know.
Quite an ordeal.
It's been interesting.
Yeah.
Well, I gotta, I have to head out. I don't know if you guys needed anything from me or was everything there?
Do you have any comments?
I think you were going to donate or do something. Donate to a group.
How much did you guys spend? I didn't see that rubric.
I'll be tallying it later, Sean.
Okay.
Do you, Sean, so do you have anything from the commission? Would you want a few of these to distribute?
Sure.
All of our activities coming up in the next one?
All right, well, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to the minutes. And actually, our December meeting, we did not have a quorum, but Nicole had taken notes and.
I wrote a quick note to you earlier.
Okay, yeah, do you want to just explain to us what we did?
For December?
What happened there or read it or something, but without, but we're not going to approve it, so. But if anything is pertinent to tonight's meeting.
Um, so we didn't have a quorum, so a lot of things were postponed. And that's where Dahlia wanted to go over the new scoring brick. She cleaned it up a bit, as you may see on the new grants. Bonnie went over the save the dates for all the events that were having in March. So March 7th is the fundraiser at Barker Mansion. March 12th is a women's history tour again at Barker Mansion. And then March 21st, the Michigan City Librarians having a speaker, which we will elaborate on all of these later. Same with, every Sunday of the month of March, there'll be an event at NAST that we're hosting. We mentioned that there were two missing commission appointment spots, but those have been filled, correct?
Yes.
Then we briefly talked about funding for promotional items, which we approved in January. And that was.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. And now let's move on to our minutes from last month. I had sent those out, plus there are copies in everybody's, at everybody's place. Let's see if there's any questions or discussion.
Janet, what is your title?
Oh, I'm the administrator.
Okay.
One of the administrators in the mayor's office.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of the minutes and the agenda?
I have the agenda.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think we have an extra copy there if you want to take a look at that. Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I make a motion that the minutes be accepted as read.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, and our treasurer's report?
All right, so I passed out, it's in the nice landscape form. And this looks a little different than what I've done in the past because I wanted to capture all of the recipients and expenses we had in 2019. So I thought it would be a nice snapshot just to do a review. And so as a cumulative 2019, we, we paid out in grants $9,593.77. And the two events that we hosted last year, Women's International Day as well as our annual Women's Equity Luncheon, I captured those expenses of $2,044.97. So in 2019, we, we spent $11,638.74. So as we enter this year, we're looking at a current balance of $21,551.71. We haven't had any revenue that I'm aware of since my last report, nor have we had any, any payouts. So any questions or comments? Looks good to me.
It looks good and it's wonderful to have, you know, the whole year.
I think it's very helpful.
That's very good.
And I like that it's separated by grant request and hours.
Yeah, and so I've kind of set up going forward, maintaining kind of that different separation because I know every year we go, now how much did we spend on catering last year? So, well, you don't see that necessarily. Well, actually, I've also gone back with every of the treasurer reports that I have, I've gone back and recreated over the last three years who we've provided grants to and in what amount, as well as expenses. Now, I would have had that for everyone tonight if they wanted to see it, although Bonnie had brought together some, had done a similar report last year just kind of as a collective. And so I just need to take a look at.
Make sure.
Yeah, making sure that, because she had, she had a year I didn't have, which was 2016. So I think as we keep that record, it'll be easy for us to understand who we've given grants to in the past, what has been our giving history to them, as well as being able to kind of track our average expenses.
Our focus has really changed through the years.
Right.
It really has. This is extremely helpful. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, do we need, do we have a motion to approve the?
I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those who signify by saying aye if you approve this?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Okay, thank you.
And Nicole, I'll send you the electronic copy. I didn't get it out to everyone electronically before the meeting.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. Well, moving on to a big part of the meeting right now, the, under Old Business International Women's Day and Women's History Month Report. And first of all, want to thank Esther so much for the grant that you wrote to Michigan City Main Street Association and for winning the grant that will cover all of the entertainment expenses for March. Thank you very much. That's tremendous.
Wonderful.
Well, that is tremendous. Thank you. And then what we are funding, what we had voted on last month, approved funding up to $500 toward refreshments and paper goods, $600 for venue, and $300 for merchandise and marketing. And I wonder, are you, have you, you know, have you made all the arrangements now with the performers?
Yes, everybody is both excited.
Okay, good. Good. And then what about refreshments and the merchandising?
Right.
What's happening?
Right. So since I'm out in Valparaiso every Friday, I can just head to Costco for whatever we need to fill in. So mostly I wanted to double check what, whether what we proposed last month was still what, the food, the food that you wanted to do. And I brought one just to refresh you if you don't have a copy of it. So the, let's see. Okay, so our March 8th is our opening, and that is the actual day, International Day. So we were talking about, and I have a question mark, so, and no other notes. So we thought the samosas for that one with chutneys and then all the regular things that we would normally have, like we'll have some cookies out and some fruit and all the coffee, tea, hot chocolate, you know, some sparkling water thing that I'll put in the urn with juice. Does that, so does, for that first one, does samosa sound like a good idea? Or did you want to go with something else before I?
I think that's been very popular at other events of yours, haven't they? Yes.
March 15th, we thought lighter, just maybe bagels and assorted cream cheeses and goat cheeses and things like that, and then adding always a gluten-free component to all of these events as well to for that. And then March 22nd, I really think we'll have things that we haven't used from the previous ones. Like I'm sure there'll be some cheese that hasn't been opened. And I thought then we would just do, pick up some additional like charcuterie items just to do a nice kind of grazing spread, you know, pick up some olives and
Or food items that like will go bad.
Yeah, just to add to that. And then March 29th with the movies, anything that's still, I mean, we might pick up some cookies, but I'll have popcorn and make a spicy popcorn usually and so does that, is that good?
Sounds good.
Okay. And I figure since I'm already in Valpo that if we, if we do need anything, it's not hard to hop down there that Friday before the Sunday event.
And that came to, you estimated around $394 for that. So we had budgeted $500 and so, you know, let us know if you're going to go over that or if it turns out that's not enough and we'll.
I think it was pretty accurate numbers unless.
Okay. Great. Great. That looks wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you.
I know, even the performers, they're so excited to have this project. Especially Leah has been really researching all sorts of protest songs. And she does sing along, so it should be a lot of fun. And she's bringing her whole band for no extra charge, so. It was just going to be her, but they're so excited about it. She said, I'm just going to bring the rest of the band.
That should be fun, too.
And for the.
Protest songs.
For the film day, Dan just came across a film of Charlie Chaplin impersonating a suffragist. And he's, you know, he's slapstick and he's falling over and he's doing, you know, but he's, anyway, it's very, very funny. So he's, he's coming across a lot of.
He's so brilliant. It's going to be so good.
It will be very entertaining, I would say.
And so the only other thing that I wanted, and what was also on my list was, did you, and I wasn't sure who was supposed to follow up with this, but the sashes and the buttons? Because that would need to, that sort of, has that already been taken care of? Or do you need me to order or?
Well, do you want to just, do you want to talk to me? Oh, yes, now that Dahlia is gone, she's not going to be around for a few weeks. So do you want to talk to me about that? And we know what the budget is and so we could work out. I had just ordered some things from the National Women's History Alliance Museum. So that, those things should be in buttons and magnets and stuff like that. So as soon as those arrive too, I, you know, I'd like to show you those.
Yeah.
And then maybe you and I could.
Because I did a whole, I did some price costs on the buttons to do the Naomi buttons, if we wanted to do the Naomi buttons. And then you said there was the local place to get the sashes done possibly, so.
Yeah.
And if that, if that doesn't work out, we, you know, there's some very costly, very wonderfully priced sashes that we could order too. I would much rather do local though.
Yeah. Yeah. I think Dahlia knew a local, a new business.
Right.
Do you know where that is?
The light was small, I guess? No, but I was going to pop there and say hi to.
Yeah. And we could, I'll email Dahlia, find out where that is. Okay, good. Okay, well, thank you so much for all you're doing.
Thank you.
And especially for, you know, obtaining the funding for all of the entertainment. That's wonderful. Okay, well, we. I just have one question. Now, all of these events are going to be at the Nest, right?
No, there's, there's some of them, only the ones on Sundays.
Only the Sunday ones?
Barker and the Public Library.
Sundays.
So 15, 22nd and 29th.
Okay. And Christina Isabel wrote a press release that is just about ready to go out. It was based on this. Vita Kuklo, who is Dahlia's sister, designed this flyer, I thought. She did a beautiful job.
I really liked it.
It is. I liked it. Great picture. So, anyway, and this is just, I will email it out tomorrow to everybody so that you can, there are some copies here. I made 30 copies, but I didn't want to use very much paper. So hope yourself to, to any of these, what you want. And then also she made a JPG of an 11 by 17 poster size. So I might get a few of those, but I'll discuss that with you, how many we could use and stuff.
Because I have an event happening on Monday, so I'm happy to have these to pass along.
Oh, good.
Do you, were these off of you or were you passing them out?
I want to pass those around, so, everybody. Okay, and now, let's see. Before we go through these, I have here some.
Thank you.
Sign-up sheets. And this is what we will work from for the events we're going to. All these events in March. Hope we can figure out tonight who's going to be going. But I'll tell you what, Barker Mansion, TJ Kalin there told me that they only need, I think they need two people at one of them and three people at the other one. And so we won't all have to show up. I have a feeling that they have kind of a target audience and some return customers, especially for the Wild Women and Wine. That seems to be a quite popular event. So maybe they're only, you know, limited in space, but they do want our help. And then he asked that we talk a little bit about the Women's Commission too, since we're co-hosts. So, and then we'll split the proceeds with him. So those are on the pink sheet. And then the March 8th, that's going to be the most, you know, that's what we all have to pitch in to, March 8th, it's the International Women's Day. We're going to have tributes to women in history. Anybody who wants to give a tribute, we're going to have games and puzzles and activities.
And then I noticed, I don't know if this is the updated version of the flyer, because I think, or maybe it was just on the press release she did where we're asking on March 8th for, if they want to, people to dress in white, yellow or purple.
Yeah, that was, that was after she finished this, so that was already on. So, yeah, and that would be really fun. So wear white or yellow or purple or a combination, if you want to, on March 8th. And if you have any games or puzzles, Shar, I heard that you have this round puzzle.
Suffrage puzzle.
Yes, suffragists. I did one of those and that's where I found a woman from Michigan City on that puzzle that I had never heard of. And so I love that puzzle. If you want to bring that, that'd be, that'd be fun to.
So I will be out of town during the 7th and 8th. However, I can get the puzzle wherever we need to get the puzzle to. So, would that be to?
You can just drop it up to the Nest.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
What are the guidelines for the, for a presentation or something?
For the tributes?
Yes, for the tributes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I mean, if we all took one, you know, it could be, it could be lengthy, unless we were really, especially me.
Well, we have two hours and I think that I wouldn't.
I don't know what you're laughing at.
Think that anyone would, you know, I would expect people to take five minutes, maybe, you know.
Some of these women though, there's probably so much to learn about them.
Did I, I did send it out to everybody, right?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. It was really exciting. Really. To see, actually seeing people there that I knew and I didn't know that they were active in the movement. So that was fun.
It was really interesting for me to see how important Indiana was to the whole national movement.
Right.
We had, we had our first Women's Rights Convention in Indiana three years after Seneca Falls. I mean, it was one of the first states to do that. Chicago was like 15 years later, so we really.
We must have had some really wild women, yes.
Yes. Yes. So, and on the pink sheet, sign-up sheet there needs to go around and that, I'm asking you to tell if you're going to make a tribute and if you want to say who it is, if you know already, and if you have any, you know, games or puzzles or activities that we can do too. So, and I would hope that all of us can attend that day and we'll do tributes. And I'm not sure how many people from the public that are there, you know, friends of ours and people that are coming, I don't know how many of them will be ready with tributes, but we'll fit as many as we can. But I think we'll start with, with the commissioners. I think that, that sounds right, seems right. But we'll think more about that before.
And maybe do you want, I can, as something to hand out, we can probably have a list of maybe some prominent ones that if somebody wants to come in, I don't know, that they'll have them, like who it is.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Good, yeah. Good idea. Okay. Okay, and then, let's see, and then the event on March 21st at the Public Library, the speaker, Janine Drake, will speak that day about Indiana suffragists and the other social movements they were involved in. And we are cosponsors of that and, or co-hosts, I mean. And that means that we are going to furnish something as a handout for people to take away with them to kind of a memento of the occasion. And the League of Women Voters is furnishing refreshments that day. So we'll, we'll figure out something maybe based on what you're finding. I don't know, but we'll figure that out by then. And then, but we need everyone to come to that. And then the other three Sundays, past International Women's Day, those three Sundays, see on your, you know, we've heard from Esther about the entertainers, the entertainment on those days at the Nest. So I hope everybody can come to all of them, but if you can't, you know, try to make it to everything you can and, and be sure to fill out on the pink sheet what you can, what, you know, what you know now you can, you're planning to do, so. And does anyone have any questions now about any of the?
We have more yellow page, yellow flyers here. Does anybody need?
I'll take one for the wines, yeah.
Okay. And I will email this out tomorrow, so put it on Facebook and email it to your friends, whatever.
Do we have Facebook events set up for these?
I don't.
I do on my page, but I don't know if you do on your page or not.
Could you do like co-host with us?
I did, I already co-hosted the commission and a lot of, I think I'll.
Oh, good. Then you already did it.
I did you individually. Anybody who came up and I could, I put them on. You would not come up as many times as I tried to get your name. Yes. I, it just wouldn't allow me to co-host you, so I either.
Did you want any of these?
Either.
Or did you get some?
Actually.
Did you get one?
I had like my own flyer. I've hosted two events already. And so.
Okay. Good.
I will.
She's like, I've already been to.
I've already promoted for you. Hopefully that was okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And now, beyond the March events that we have going on, we are also planning a poetry contest. This had originally been planned to be essay and poster contests. And then when we were, when we started learning about Naomi Anderson, the suffragist from Michigan City, she was a poet and Faye suggested that we have a poetry contest, K through 12. And I just, we had a big stumbling block, but it just got cleared up that Human Rights Commission agreed that the submissions, the entries can be delivered to Human Rights Commission office, can be mailed there or dropped off, I guess. Anyway, so we have a place because we didn't have a place to receive them. And I never found a way to do it to, for the students to submit their poetry online along with parental release, signed by the parents. And, and also verification of the rules for it. And especially that I'm going to ask the, we're going to have to ask the students to verify that this is original work of theirs. If there's what they're submitting, they have to sign it's original.
I like that. I'm really glad you're adding that. I think it's.
I have found a lot, yeah, a lot of help online just from poetry contests around the country, so. But I think now to come up with the final, make the final decisions about it, I would like to have a meeting. Is anybody willing to go to a meeting? To, especially to plan, or I guess I could email a lot of, a lot of, some of the information. But I have ideas for, you know, the length of the poem and how many characters per line and things like that, based on what other, other contests are requiring. And, but I, with this, I wanted to make a statement, write out a statement about Naomi Anderson and the fact that she was so involved in so many, so many causes. And, and then we had decided that the theme of the, of the poem will be, what would I march for? So, and which I think is a wonderful, wonderful theme. So, anyway, so the, the instructions and all that, do you want me to write up a draft and send it to everyone? Or should we have a meeting to go through that together, whoever wants to be on that, be involved in that? in that?
And the guidelines that you're considering, how, how will you reach some of these decisions or by reading some other, um, ways to judge?
I've looked at a lot of other contests online for student, uh, poetry contests.
And so those will be given, the guidelines will be given to those who enter?
Yes, yes, and it'll include, you know, no, no vulgar language and, you know, a lot of things. I have a, you know, a few things, not too many because these are students, so, um, but we do have to decide how the awards will be given. If it's K through 12, you know, how many, how many awards are we going to give and are we going to have, um, I was thinking maybe we would even have, maybe you would want to have like two students from each grade, K through 12, um, two students who are the finalists and they would all receive, um, that'd be 26 students then would all receive certificates at a ceremony, hopefully here at City Hall or somewhere, and get some recognition, which is what they probably want, you know, would appreciate most. But we also have to decide if we would give any kind of award, any kind of gift card or something. So, so those are the decisions that we have to make. Can we send that around and discuss it online or is that, does that constitute a meeting for open door? I don't know if it, I don't know what it, what it does.
I think it pretty much does.
Okay.
I do.
Okay. Um, would anyone be able to meet anytime next week? Is there any time next week? Or the following week?
Bonnie?
You're talking a day meeting or evening? Either one. I'm available for most.
Why don't you come up with something and then we'll, you know?
Okay, what about...
That's really the easiest way.
Okay. What about Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 25th? Would that work?
I, maybe, uh, I'm coming back from a, uh, coming back from Missouri, so I'm not sure if I will be back in time, but on the time.
What about Wednesday, Ash Wednesday, the 26th?
Do it a day or the, or the evening?
Whatever anybody wants, morning, afternoon, or evening.
The next two weeks for me, next two and a half are booked, pretty much.
Okay. Um, we had hoped to announce it around this, well, March 6th or the following week and then, um, give the students actually four weeks to complete, before the deadline to submit. So, um, we could, what, okay, what about next Wednesday? It's Ash Wednesday though, does that make a difference for anyone for church or anything? Okay. Um, do you want to meet Wednesday morning? Would that work for, how many people would that work for that want to do this?
Wednesday morning will work for me. It will work.
Oh, it will?
I can't.
No? Okay.
Well, that's my last, that's my last day of mornings.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Well, it's Thursday, do you want to be in this or...
I will, I, you know, I'd be glad to help out as much as I can, absolutely.
Okay. If we meet on Wednesday, it sounds like that's the day that Shar can make it, or that's the day Joanne can't.
So, if you make it on Thursday, I can't make it, but Joanne can.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're actually one person? We just, I see.
Yeah. What about afternoon or evening? Would that work for, you know, for either of you?
You said morning.
Afternoon, I could, yeah.
I'm, um, I'm heading out of town on the 27th, so that Thursday, I'm out for the next...
So, Wednesday afternoon?
Two and a half weeks.
We could both do it?
Wednesday afternoon?
Work.
Is that good for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, Wednesday afternoon, the 26th.
What time in the afternoon?
How about 1 o'clock?
1 o'clock is great.
Okay. Did you want to, um, be at the meeting?
I would definitely love to be at the meeting.
Well, then, would you like to host it?
Yes.
I know Esther well, or I would not.
Then it's more fun, we're at the nest.
Yeah. Okay. At the nest. 803 Franklin Street. Okay. 1 o'clock, Wednesday, the 26th, 803 Franklin Street, the nest, to, um, make all the final decisions about the poetry contest. Thank you all for, for that. And I'm very grateful to, um, the Human Rights Commission for, for being willing to accept the entries. Um, and then the next thing that we have going on that we're doing this year is the parade and in July, probably in July, last year it was June 30th, but, um, usually they're in July. I'm not going to be able to...
It's June 27th.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna be June, June 27th is the parade.
I am going to be out of, I'm not going to be available at all in June. I'm gonna be gone. So, somebody else, if we're going to do that, somebody else has to take it on and be in charge of it, or everybody else can, but I can't be, I can't be involved in it. I'll, in fact, I'm not even sure I'll be back in time to be in it, but, but...
So, what do you have to do? Fill out the application and get the people together?
Yeah, and decide what, you know, if we're going to march or if you can find a...
A float.
A van or a float or something and, and decide about how...
Float's a little expensive.
Yeah.
Excuse me? If, if we go to a float, it's a lot more expensive.
Is it? Yeah.
But you might have connections that I don't know about.
Yeah. So, okay, does someone want to, um, be in, in charge of making the arrangements for the parade?
Well, that looks like a good month for me. I will try.
Thank you.
Vacation Bible school for my church the week before, but, uh, I'll try to organize the parade.
Thank you very much, Fay. Thank you. Okay. Good deal. And then, um, Women's Equality Day, which is August 26th, and the League, uh, League of Women Voters of La Porte County is planning, tentatively planning a rally for that day and don't know what time of day it will be yet, so I think whatever, um, the Women's Commission does should, um, you know, it could be the following week, which is when we've always observed it, is the first week in, in September. I have contacted, uh, Janet Block at Lebesnik Center to see if, um, you know, what they have available, what dates they have available, and, um, I asked her too to give us the price on evening in case we decide to do a dinner. We've done luncheons, um, every year for the last few years, and they're free, they're very fancy, very, very nice, and they're catered and we always have, um, really good speakers, so, um, so I will let you know when we, um, do get a date from Lebesnik Center. And I wondered, have we talked about this and I don't think we voted on it? Are we, um, do you want to consider paying a speaker, paying for a speaker? We've always been able to get, you know, get, we've never had to pay in the past for our speakers and we've really had some terrific speakers.
This is for the Women's Equality Day.
I think, I think it depends on who it is.
And what's the date again?
A lot, you know, a lot of people are quite willing to do that because it's an exciting time, you know?
August 26th is actually the day, but we don't, we're waiting for the Lebesnik Center to provide us availability.
And we've usually done it there the following week.
Right.
You know, so...
It has been at their request after Labor Day, but maybe...
They did request that. They should still have their exhibit up, that we are, are cosponsoring, so that would be really nice.
But the rally probably will be on the 26th.
Yes. It should be.
I think it should be.
It should be, yeah. So, um, there was one, um, speaker on the Indiana Historical Society Speakers Bureau list that I thought would be wonderful and they said that sometimes they waive their fees, so I could even find out if she's willing to do that. But she talks about how the suffrage movement was funded and how women's rights movements are funded now. And so I think that would be kind of, you know, that's when we start looking at the future, or at least now, rather than the past, and we kind of need that, I think.
Do you know what her speaker fee is?
Uh, it's around $400. So, sometimes they're waiving their fees, so, um, and maybe since it's after August 26th, maybe she would be willing to do that.
I know, because we have a beach.
Pardon?
We have a beach.
Yeah.
Shopping and stuff.
Okay, well...
Do you know if she's, she would be available yet or not quite?
I could, I could check on that as soon as, um, we find out from Lebesnik, the dates. It'll be, if I just go ahead and check?
I would check.
And find out what her, yeah. Okay.
So, we know. To me, $400 doesn't seem that much if she is on the historical, you know, but...
Well, and also though, um, she would hopefully live close enough to Michigan City that she can do a round, do a round trip that day. That's what we have on March 21st, our speaker is coming from, I think Ball State University. Most of the speakers are professors and, um, she's going to be able to, um, she's gonna do it in a round trip.
And they're offering, we didn't even ask, they're offering to do it.
Yeah, yeah, so, yep, so, okay. Well, moving on from that, time to consider the grant requests that we have. And you, you each have the, uh, little, the rubric, um, for each of the three, they were at the, these were at the back of the packet that I gave out, but I have to find mine, you know?
Oh, my. Okay, I have to, um, leave.
Okay. Did you do open? Thank you. Thank you, Fay.
It's a mess.
Thank you.
So, on, on these, so this is what our ordinance calls for?
Okay.
And then, Bonnie, on number five, I had the same kind of question, on the grants to entities, organization, activities identified under Indiana Code?
That refers specifically to, um, they're, no, they're not 501(c)(3), they're government entities. It includes hospitals and, and it includes hospitals and city parks and, and city museums and things, so...
Okay.
I, I, we've never had, as far as I know, we've never had...
Okay.
Anything that fits that.
I was gonna say, I misinterpreted that one and I thought that meant that the grant, that the request that grant that they wanted, um, they were 501(c)(3).
Mm-hmm. No, they don't have to be a 501(c)(3) to get it, to receive a grant from us, but what they, and it's the ordinance that sets up.
I might have put my numbers on the wrong page, wrong line is what I'm saying.
Okay. More, I would think that most, almost all the grants we ever give out are number two, education of the public.
Okay, so what can I help? Without influencing, what can I help?
Let me, let me try to see if I can figure it out.
And that's scholarships.
Why would this, can I put a number?
That's the only one I put.
Why would this grant?
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Is this an educational?
Most of the grants that we give out are under, are number two, um, education of the public and community events and, but it, everything has to be educational, so that's what we, that's the most, um, important part of it for, and this is all set out word for word in the ordinance that established, um, the Women's Commission, so they allowed a lot that we could be spending on ourselves, transportation and lodging.
Absolutely. No, we noticed that the first year and it was almost embarrassing because we couldn't, we couldn't possibly, we, we, none of us felt comfortable doing that.
Yeah.
To that extent.
Well, I think a lot of like going, looking at the ones that are for us, I feel like we'd be like to bring education to the public rather than for ourselves.
It could be either, it could be, well, educational scholarships too might fit one of these tonight.
Yeah.
But, um, just, you would pick the, um, one that is most, would be most relevant. That's, yeah. If we wanted to go to training, like the state commission has trainings, you know, in California and stuff that they go, and we could do that. Never considered, but I mean, it's a lot.
So, this would be, um...
We are one of the only ones in the state.
Okay.
There used to be more, there used to be.
Yeah. So, this would, yeah, so...
I don't know what the other ones did, and what happens for them.
And so, um, this is, these would be materials and supplies for us, for the commission.
Okay, okay, okay.
And, yeah. And then, um, and then same advocacy for commission, so that is, that again is for us.
Coming to our meetings.
And then, um, this, educational scholarship, um, yeah, that could be, yeah, so between one of those two.
Okay, okay, okay.
I got it.
Yeah.
Explain that last one again, Bonnie. Whoops, pardon. Explain that last one again, please. If, if grants to entities, organizations, or activities identified under, so is that, is that, is that something we're trying to do or not? Or is it just...
No, it's something that's in the, um, ordinance.
I know it's in the ordinance, I know it's in the ordinance. That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, is that, is that a, we're trying to do it, we're trying to really make a match there because it, you know, if it does, it's four points. I mean, so what's, so what's the, what's the improvement of that?
Um, I don't think any of these things that are listed, this one, I, this one, the old group that listed everything, so...
That's what I did.
It's, um, parks, playgrounds, and recreational facilities.
It doesn't have to match all five sections.
It only has to match one, yeah.
And so, no, we're just, we're doing a...
And neighborhood centers, community centers, civic centers, convention centers, as defined by Indiana Code, which means that it's, these are all, and transportation systems and hospitals and airports, bus terminals, that's what we could fund under any of these, under number five.
So, I have a question because, um, this is, I've never done, I, I haven't taught, I haven't done rubrics before, and so I just found the most appropriate column and marked it up.
That's what I did.
Yes. I, yeah.
So, but we wouldn't need to put anything in each column?
So, just check each row. Just, no. If you, if, for instance, if you thought that, um, there was one that was educational scholarships, on that line for that, number four, that's when, anyway, on that, you would, yeah.
And then that would be score sheet.
That's all you would score.
Perfect. Okay.
So, we're not looking to have a hierarchy of scores?
No. No.
So, how do we decide if it's, if it's fundable then? If it just matches one?
Yes. It has to match at least one. It could match more than one, but that rarely happens.
But what I'm saying is usually with the rubric, you're looking, and I've done these so much with, with, with scholarships of various kinds, but you're looking, you're looking to, um, to itemize it so that if you can't fund them all, you're looking for what, which one you can fund.
Yeah, and what is going to happen...
This is done differently.
No, what's going to happen now is that it goes to, all of these go to Shar. She will add them all up and the, um, and an average score from a quorum must be greater than three to fund it.
That's what I needed. So, where are you getting that information?
I'm giving you this.
Anyone break her off?
I'm just going to give you this. This is the hair down. I don't have it. I don't understand.
Okay.
Yeah, so the average score from a quorum is greater than three.
Okay, great. You know, I'm a history major, not a mathematics.
I'd have missed this rubric all up, it's just all stretched out.
And then, so I guess the question is, are we expecting me to provide this?
You can do it right now?
Yeah, okay.
But if you can't, then, then you'll have to email it to us tomorrow. I do want to say something about the grant recipient follow-up reports. Dahlia mentioned last month that she wanted to do that. She contacted the grant recipients and received two responses. Nobody else even, even acknowledged her. So, so she is going to pursue that. If she doesn't have, you know, an answer.
Has she done the report to the council yet?
No, that's gonna be the end of March.
Don't worry about that. March is one of her. I can get her to wine sale one.
So the grant requests that were given out, only two of them have responded with the follow-up reports that they're.
I'm gonna mention that I have some concerns regarding using the rubric because I feel like there's confusion, and I don't want someone to not be funded based on confusion.
Yeah, yeah. The first time I did it, I know, I, I checked like every box. And then Dahlia had to figure it out.
There's nothing wrong with that either. Yeah, I, I, I don't see, I, my, I don't see where it's really valuable, the way we're doing it. I don't.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's, it, if, if you would have more than one box here that you checked, the final, the, when you total them up, it has to average out to greater than three.
In one section.
Yeah, but it could even be the total. I mean, if it was, if you, if you did that to four different lines, you still, then when you divide it by four, it's gonna have to be greater than three.
How was, how was that determined that greater than three is?
Because you add up, well.
Yeah, I, well, it just, it just.
If, Joanne, if, if you, if you three gave, gave a score of four, and we, and the two of us gave a score of one, then, one, two, four, eight, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, divided by five, that would be less than three. So it would lose because of that. But that's how it, that's how.
So take the total and divide it by the number of.
Yeah, by the number of.
I'll be curious to see how things come out in the future, and if we're pleased with the results.
I think that this is what Dahlia started, and she's, you know, she's a mathematician.
Oh, I know she is, I know she is.
And she's a teacher.
And I am too.
Well, I'm a mathematician.
I'm a teacher, that's for sure.
We were trying to find a mathematical way, you know, something more objective.
Every time I was in charge of scholarships of any kind, I always hit it mathematically, always. And, and I was always surprised myself, how it turned out so well.
So.
But it was measurable as I was going along. It was very measurable, that's what I'm having difficulty with. I don't see these as measurable. I could see when I, yeah, I always, it was always very measurable, you know, each part. I, I don't see.
You know, measurable would be if, for instance, we would look at how many people are served and.
Yes.
Exactly.
What, you know, and categories like that. So we could work on revising this.
The language, some of the language.
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
I feel better with that.
Do you want to work on that sometime in the future?
I just, you know, you know what I'm, you know what I'm going through.
Yes, I know, I know.
I just don't know if I have that.
We could talk this, we could talk about this at a meeting coming up.
And, and quite honestly, I think once, once I do it and see the results of it, I could come up with language.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, are there any public comments?
I do, I do have a public comment. So this is just a, for instance, the March, March 7th is the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and it's also right before the start of our Women's Day things. Would it be a good idea to march in that parade with band, with the sashes and maybe a banner? We get that banner made that we talked about, and that might be a good promo for the rest of March.
Yeah, I, you know, the League of Women Voters decided against doing that one because the weather is so.
You're not gonna see, you're not gonna see the sashes.
Well, you do it over your coat. It'll be an over-your-coat thing. Yeah, I don't suggest.
It's, it can be extremely cold.
I don't, I don't.
Who knows?
It's so true. It was just, it was just a quirk.
Yeah, I know. It would be a very fun parade to march in, wearing sashes and, you know, and carrying signs.
Carrying signs is difficult too, even banners. It's killing, it really is. I mean, it looks like nothing because you're not holding anything of weight, but having your arm in a position for a while.
Well, and then if it's windy, it's gonna.
Windy too, absolutely, yeah.
I don't want to be around those signs.
Yeah, those, those get heavy too, just, just, just moving your arms, seriously. But I, I mean, the kids even, even our big guys complained with the boys and girls.
I have a question.
Yes.
For these sign up, for the signups, if my plans change and I'm available, is that okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We're not gonna keep you out, that's for sure.
It's just March is a funny, you know, because all the kids are away at college, so that means they're coming back on spring break at different times.
And spring break isn't always the same time.
We don't plan anything. I'm gonna be in LA, and I don't know when I'm flying back, so.
Well, I'm not available in April.
Okay, okay.
Are you signing up for Barker? I can't, I don't know when I'm returning back from LA. I've not bought my ticket.
Well, nobody signed up to help at Barker, and they only wanted two people, and.
I can do this one.
What day did no one sign up for a Barker? I already volunteered here.
Barker Mansion, it's, it has to be Women's Commission's. It's the, the 7th and the 12th, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The 12th is a Thursday.
I can only say maybe for that. I'm not 100% positive.
What length of time, maybe that'll help us out?
The first, the, on the Thursday, the 12th, the event is from 6 to 8. So I don't know what time we would have to arrive. These are the two events. I said, you know, I don't think there's enough of us. We should not do these. And everybody said, oh, we'll make money, we're gonna do it.
I can, I can do that. I should be able to do the 12th of March.
Nicole just put down, oh, she's, yeah, Nicole just agreed to do it. I mean, signed up to do that.
Okay.
The 7th, the Wild Women and Wine, that's Saturday night. And that's, you know, the next day is our big event. And, and that's the day of the parade, so, but.
I can only give back to you on the 7th. I just, I have to see.
Plus, okay, I'll put Veronica is possible.
I would, I'm bummed that I'm not gonna be here for the Wine Women and.
Yeah, yeah.
Wild Women and Wine, or whatever it is. So I do have a, I do have a score, but then I also realized we probably have a hiccup with one. So everything scored a 3.6 or 4. Okay, so look, I would gather that would be to fund all three. The question is on the, is on the Anita King Project, she didn't specify our amount.
She didn't know.
And so the question becomes, we agreed to fund, but we didn't identify them out.
That's right, I didn't.
Yeah.
I knew there was something else.
She said $1,000 for like.
So she, 300 for the flight. And I asked about the artifacts, but, but they don't know how much, you know, they might have to pay for those. That's the kind of thing I'd rather fund on that, but they don't know. And they do know that the flight is $300, and.
Which is a good price.
Yeah, to LA, yes, yes. And I would be, I would, well, suggest at this point that we fund the flight, the $300 for the flight.
So I make a motion that we agree to fund $300 for the flight for.
Would we, I mean, do we just want to do 300? Or do we want to do like the, our full amount is 500 to go?
I've got a motion on the floor.
Is there a second to fund 300? There's still five of us left.
Okay.
I, if, I don't know if I can second.
Well, I think if we don't have a second, then there's.
It dies.
It, it dies.
And so then. I don't think the president can do that.
And so then, Nicole, you had a, you had a counter offer.
I mean, I was just suggesting, I, I mean, I, apparently we approved it to be funded, but.
What? But it's not, it's not automatic that we give everybody 500. That's not automatic.
And it's not automatic that they have to give, that they have to ask for something that'll be, add up to 500 in any way. I mean, we, we can, we can give more in some cases if we want, if we want more than that's asked for. The way that's broken down, it's the flight, it's the lodging.
I don't know if we've ever paid for lodging for anyone ever in any of the grants we've ever given out.
What was the grant that we, I mean, did we pay for lodging for that girl that we flew out for?
It was part, it was part flight, part lodging, yeah. And, and we, we, she got another grant, so it was actually, we were able to pay less than what she requested. We just built the balance, we had agreed to a certain amount, and it came under that. So, yes, we do have precedent for that.
Does someone want to make a motion?
So I make a motion that we approve it for $500.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay.
So I will put in the request with the comptroller's office for all three. How do you want to follow up with?
Do we have to have a separate motion though, for the amount for the other two?
I think the other two by, the other two are pretty clear. It's $350 for the STEM and $500 for Soul Steppers. So it was a clear designated amount.
That's right, they specified it, and the other one didn't, okay, okay.
And I would like to, we probably want some education on the rubric.
Yes.
Form and to have some consistency for next.
Yes, and it definitely needs a statement on there about how much to fund it for. But the original, you know, she didn't include anything. And I just, you know, cut and pasted that and put it in that, so.
Well, this is, this is normal. This happens with things like this. It takes a while to get, get it where you want, and then the next year you might change it anyway.
We do change it every year. When there's a new president, we eventually change, change all that. So, okay, are there any commissioners' comments? Anything?
So the state of Indiana is doing a research study on maternal and infant health. And so they have a survey out for women, moms, and community members to take to see where their needs should be getting addressed.
You say the state, what, what, what part of the state?
The Department of Health. I got the email from the Indiana State Department of Health. So if you guys are interested in taking it, I can send it out, and then.
And do you want to just send it to?
Yeah, I'll send it, and then they said to. Yeah, share it and forward it to anyone and everyone, so.
Okay.
I've been doing it.
Yep, should do that. Any other comments from the commissioners or from the public?
Just very briefly. I spoke at Exchange House this week, so I promoted your events.
Thank you.
And I'll promote those. Next Tuesday, we have the Coffee with the Mayor at the Senior Center, so I will bring that up there. And then we also have an evening one in March. So I will continue to.
Thank you.
Let people know about the events.
Thank you.
Would it be helpful to have some of these flyers there for the Coffee with the Mayor?
I can take some of those. I had created my own because I was going out and about. But, I mean, I can take and make some copies of those and put them up on their boards.
That would be great, thank you.
And actually, when I was at the meeting the other night, a couple people actually bought their tickets online for the event at the Barker Mansion.
Awesome.
On the 7th, so it was good to get out there and let people know.
Very good. Okay, is there anything else? Anyone?
I make a motion that we dismiss.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you all for coming tonight.